Prove meeting of the planning board to order. Everyone please rise for the bench.
To the flag, the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is the approval of July, of the minutes for July seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five. Comments or revisions? Grace, on page two, there's open beam. Uh, second bullet point down, which is not required to go to GML, we're missing the L.
Okay.
And on page three, at the very bottom, turning naught and advise that, an amended, amended if that's spelled.
Okay.
Other comments, revisions? Listen, I have a motion to approve the minutes of July seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five as modified this evening.
Salvo.
Okay, we have Eric, Seamus, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Next item would be the minutes of August twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five. Comments or revisions? Okay, Grace, uh, members present, Neil's in, just telling. And Kelly should be listed on there as well. Other comments or revisions? Knock out a motion to approve the minutes as modified this evening, August twenty-first. Diana, second by?
Second.
Seamus, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Next item on the agenda is Gimms Garden LLC, twenty-four dash one dash seven. Application for site plan approval for agricultural warehousing onion packaging facility. On ten point six-six plus or minus acres along Pulaski Highway, County Route Six, and Wozniewski Road in the AI zone with AK-three overlay. Here tonight to discuss part two EAF, make deck and draft resolution possible.
Good evening, I'm Vince Peter Zach here tonight.
Yeah.
Need a full submission, I think when he answered everybody's questions, if there's any further questions.
That was a very quick summary. Sean.
Should I try to be quicker or?
You don't want me to top that.
Um, I just talked to you about the part two and then council can discuss the other matters. So I indicated the applicant's last appearance that Kelly had prepared part two. Uh, I thought it was distributed, it was not, I distributed prior to this meeting. Is there anything in that part two that the board would like to go over? It's in Kelly's typical fashion, where there's an arrow next to a small impacted, differentiate between a no and a small impact. Um, was there any questions the board had on my thing for a certain way, or whether it felt some change?
So on, on section eight, impact on agricultural resources.
Sure.
It's saying yes, there's impact, and everything's checked off as no or small, so do we presume they're all no's?
They were all no's, the reason is if you look under, directly under the eight, it says propose action to impact agricultural resources. And then it references the EAF.
Send it back to the first part.
If you go back to the first part, this property is in the Orange County Agricultural District. So because of that, it's a yes in the top.
By default.
None of the subquestions are, uh, are mine.
Perfect, thank you. Other comments or concerns from the board?
Motion.
Knock out a motion to approve the part two full EAF form, anticipation potential project impacts.
Salvo.
Phil, second by?
I'll second.
Marty, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against?
Now we turn it over to you.
Thank you, Sean.
You're welcome.
Councillor.
Good evening, everyone, so we prepared a draft resolution. Uh, I tried not to mess around with this too much, because I know you're used to certain styles, so I tried to keep as much as I could like Kelly used to do. Uh, just a couple of revisions that I made in speaking with Sean based on procedural history. Um, we added, well, actually, a couple of things I just changed before this evening for the plans. There are a couple of things that Sean had reminded me that were included. Uh, we added the town of Gosha application of site plan approval, owner's endorsement and sign inspection. So that would be number eight, uh, under the identification of plans. Also included a, a short form environmental assessment form that was dated May thirtieth, I included in the resolution. And an agricultural data statement that was undated is number ten, so I added those. Uh, the other thing I added was assuming this gets approved tonight, he'll have to make a motion for negative declaration. So I added that in the procedural history. Um, and then other than that, the resolution is preself-explanatory, um, any questions about that, Mr. Chairman?
Okay, I've got a couple of items, actually, on the identification of plans. Uh, in addition to the ones you mentioned, um, does the part two EAF that we just approved go on that?
We can put it on there since you adopted it tonight.
Okay.
We can list that.
And then also the correspondence from the New York State Parks and Recreation Historic Preservation and North Country Ecological Services. Those documents, do those go on the table?
Those might have been dated, we know I didn't get those to him, I think those are on there.
Okay. And then, do you want other comments on the resolution?
Okay, just part two gave what, um, what due?
July two thousand twenty-five.
Thank you.
No, no date.
Okay, I'll just include that.
Right below on the procedural history, the, at the end of the sentence says, the application as classified as should be is classified as.
The application, right, is classified as illicit action. And I, just so you know what I did, Mr. Chairman, I actually, at the end of that sentence, I did add the board issued negative declaration to secret on September eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, assuming the board goes that direction.
Okay. Uh, then further down, this was, I wasn't trying to find these. The last paragraph, it says further in the middle, it says further with the town board determine the project with not materially downgrade, should that be planning board?
Yes, ahead of.
And then questions on specific conditions, number, letter B. Last sentence says the applicant shall comply with the removal of the existing driveways indicated. I wasn't sure that's how we resolved that, I thought we were talking possibly a gate with a knock box or?
That's this evening, Mr. Chairman, if you want to discuss that, absolutely.
That, that was one item, and the other thing I was a little confused on was H. Plans for the right of way being thirty-three feet wide, the applicants are dedicating up to twenty-five feet from the center line of the road for highway purposes. They said dedicate up to twenty-five feet from the center line, is that what's existing, up to twenty-five feet?
So, I'm not sure where the road sits relative to the right way that's already in place, right? So what the applicant's going to do is only require to give, to dedicate up to twenty-five feet from the center line, right? So I know the old law.
So it has been identified just yet, okay. Okay, so that'll be the limit.
So we're kind of normalizing the right away on the applicant's side a little bit.
So what, where does the thirty-three feet wide come in?
Uh, yeah, go ahead.
That's existing right now, the right ways thirty-three.
Okay, from one side to the other.
Right, so we're going to make it far as.
Be a rest, it'll be fifty if it was.
Both sides.
Right, both sides, right, okay. Other comments, Phil?
Uh, a couple of comments on the, under application summary, fourth line down. Accessory offices located on A, you can eliminate the word O.
Hold on, just a minute, I'm trying.
Okay.
Application summary, I'm sorry.
Application summary.
Okay.
Four lines down. Accessory offices located on A, eliminate the word O.
Got it, thank you.
Okay, and then, uh, identification of plans, number one, correspondence prepared.
Got it.
Okay, and that should be, the next line should be July, uh, June. And. Specific condition E.
E, yep.
Five lines down, that should be at the end of the line, building inspector's apostrophe S.
Got it.
And then in G, I would suggest that, um, there shall be no off-site glare. And the lighting design shall be dark sky friendly features, period.
Be more thoughtful.
Okay.
There shall be no?
There shall be, uh, no off-site glare, and the lighting design shall be dark sky friendly features.
Pictures.
Pictures.
The lighting design pictures?
Features, pictures.
How if I say it shall be dark sky compliant, is that okay?
That's fine. That's it, good night.
Thanks, Phil. Chairman? Eric, Marty?
Uh, Seamus, go ahead.
It's not mentioned here, but the previous owners had, uh, the housing for, uh, agricultural workers. And they do look horrible, maybe for safety reasons, they should be brought down. As your building, you know what I'm talking about, right behind where the warehouses, there is the migrant housing. And they're falling apart, so for the applicant's will be, would be, you know, so that it's not a sweep or anything. Maybe those buildings should be knocked down, can we say such a thing in here?
Well, so is the applicant, uh, are, is there any intention to clean it down?
There was none at this point, we can add, uh, inspection, construction inspection.
Because they look pretty bad, at, at first I thought they weren't too bad, and then it was brought to my attention that they were, so I went back to look. And they really look in bad shape, so obviously nobody's going to live in there, but for safety reasons, they should probably be condemned and knocked down.
I'll discuss that with the applicant, but I can't.
Chairman, whether they should be knocked down.
Yeah, see how expensive it is to stuff, but it is, it is a house.
So do you want to add a condition to the resolution, subset, uh, if determined by the building inspector that those would come down?
Yeah.
Yes.
So let him go into condition J. Determines, I just see the, the expectation as well as, uh, migrant housing structures. Just out of curiosity, Diana, did you verify that yourself, or how do you know that they're in that shape?
Sean and I walked it.
I looked at it from the road, they were pretty rough, but I would, I would be hesitant to put it in a burden zone without having a professional.
That's my concern, are we overstepping, are we overstepping here?
Well, I said that I'm looking.
Building inspectors, so you know.
Yeah, it's not for the building inspector, but I'm looking at the applicant as well, if anybody should be playing around there, it's a lawsuit if it, if they get hurt. So I just thought I'd mention that they are not moving ready by any means.
I would just say, it is determined that the building inspector determines migrant housing structures are a threat to public health, safety and welfare. The applicant shall be directed to remove such structures.
Can, can you reread that?
Sure, if it is determined that the building inspector determines that the migrant housing structures are a threat to public health, safety and welfare.
Okay.
Could, could it be, and not, instead of just, that they should remove, that they shall be mitig, uh, repaired or mitigated to the satisfaction of the building department?
Yeah.
As an alternative to, to, yeah?
Yeah, threats to be removed or mitigated. Does that satisfy the building department?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other comments or revisions to be made, comments to be made?
Anything I want to reveal?
Do you have to, uh, adopt to make that?
Yes, you just need a motion for that, and I'll, I'll have one prepared, but that's, I would catch up to the resolution, but I just need a motion for.
Could I have said motion?
I'll make the motion.
Marty, second by?
I'll second.
Seamus, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? In that case, can I have a motion to approve the resolution, conditional approval, major site plan from Gimms Garden LLC as modified?
I'll please some option.
Diana, second by?
I'll second.
Marty, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Brogan?
Thank you very much.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is all in audio, eleven Gerda Lane, nine dash one dash one twenty-four point one. Application for amended site plan for agricultural worker housing on forty-three point two plus or minus acres on Cedar Swamp Road. AI zone, AK-three floodplain and ponding street corridor and water supply watershed overlay. So we're here tonight to consider a draft resolution of approval. One recusal. Marty, would you like to step up?
Good evening, my name is John Furst, attorney, man and writer, on behalf of the applicant. Last week we had discussed a, a slight modification to a approval resolution from last year. Um, the, uh, basically the idea is to kind of, um, delay or push off the requirement of the operations permit from Orange County. Orange County will not issue the operations permit until the proposed water su- supply system is installed for migrant farm worker housing. My client hasn't closed on the property yet, because it's contingent on the chairman signing of the plan, so it's almost, it's, it's, it's almost, it's poss, it's impossible for us to actually install the system prior to owning the property, or it's very difficult. So we're just looking to essentially postpone that requirement with respect to the Orange County operations permit. So, and I think last week we had discussed when the building inspector does have to issue an electrical permit in connection with the water supply system. So as part of installing the water supply system, there is some electrical components that have to be inspected. Um, so that way you guys are known and aware that nobody is going to be occupying, or no additional residents are going to be occupying that until the art, the operations permit is issued from Orange County.
Thank you. Sean.
Uh, nothing really further, Mr. Chairman, this just really changes the order of operations, everything that you had asked for initially will be done for the applicant as a CO. They just, like, like Mr. Furst said, they're just looking to do it, uh, so it can be timed in with the course of the property.
Councillor.
We have a draft resolution for approval this evening, uh, the chairman members of the board. And the resolution essence removes specific condition five B and replaces it with the following condition specific seven, which I'll just read to the record. Says prior to the building inspection, the certificate of completion for the electrical work needed in connection with the installing the water supply system for migrant farm housing, farm worker housing. The applicant must obtain and furnish to the town building department an operations permit for migrant farm worker housing in the Orange County Department of Health. The applicant should provide a copy of the operations permit for migrant farm worker housing each year to the town building department, along with any other correspondence from the Department of Health, including, but not limited to, inspection reports, violations, et cetera.
Is it sure to show? Shall prove, shall.
Before we get much farther with this agricultural, um, facility for, for migrant workers. You're not, you're not doing agriculture with this new all in whatever, all in audio, are you? You're not farming, you're not planting, you're not harvesting, you're not grading.
Right, but, uh, so as part of the, when we amended, amended the approvals back in March of two thousand twenty-four. I think for market, according to your code, market farm, farm worker housing, as long as it's, the farm is within the town.
Yeah, but you're not farming.
On that specific parcel, no, but the surrounding parcels and within the town, there is.
Gerda's not growing anything if he sells that.
Excuse me?
Gerda's not going to be growing anything if he sells that.
But there's other farms.
As far as I understood from the state of New York, if you have agricultural housing, it's for the, your workers that are on your farm, and it's free housing, are you charging rent?
Yes.
Okay, then it's not farm worker housing, you're renting them as apartments.
This aspect was already approved back in March of two thousand twenty-four.
And I remember arguing about it a year ago. And as far as I knew, those buildings were going to be vacant, that's what I thought was agreed a year ago, that there would not be any more, uh, migrant housing on that property, and that they were all supposed to move out.
That was two and a half years ago, there was an original resolution where you had approved that aspect.
And I'm sure I complained every single time as a farmer.
Then, then the applicant went back and said, you know what, I, I want to continue those uses, so we had to come back to the planning board to get.
Okay, if you want to have apartments, you can have apartments, but you can't call it migrant housing, because migrant housing in the state of New York is free.
Well, we're getting, we're getting approvals by the Department of Health, Orange County Department of Health.
I'm talking about ag markets.
Department of Health are the ones that oversee the operations department or market farm housing.
They should not be considered migrant housing.
You're telling me that, I don't have the, uh, experience to say yea or nay to what you're saying.
And I've been bringing it up every single time.
I know you've been bringing it up, but.
It should not be considered migrant housing, they are apartments if they're charging rent, because migrant housing is free.
Who would they be charging rent to, to the farmer whose farmland they're working? Or would you be charging it to the migrant worker?
I believe it's to the tenants, I'm not sure of the exact relationship.
So then it's not migrant housing, it is a regular apartment.
I've never heard of free, free, um, free housing.
Oh, it's always free housing, we've never, ever, 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 they get free housing, they get free food, and they get, uh, paid for what they do.
That might be as.
My husband was, uh, Orange County Farm Bureau president for twenty-eight years, up until three years ago, trust me, I lived there.
Okay, well, that might be yours.
And I know that the, every single farm that has migrant workers, they get a stipend from the state to have free housing for the, for the, uh, the employees that are on the farm, for their families and for that. They get free room, free board, free food, whatever they want, if, whether it's a dairy farm, or whether it's a vegetable farm, whatever kind of food they want, whatever we grow, we give to them. And they get free housing, plus a salary, twenty dollars an hour, I want to be a migrant, but that's beside the point.
Orange County Department of Health has not mentioned any of this to us as we've gone through this process for the last eighteen months.
Okay, but then, I'm just finding a discrepancy in this, it's not for migrant housing, you're charging rent.
Okay, well, I don't have the information in front of me, it's, like I said, it's eighteen months ago when the resolution was originally approved to allow migrant farm worker housing. So you're kind of blind signing me on this, but maybe that's your situation, this specific situation could be different.
It's not agriculture, I don't know how it can be migrant housing.
So can I just jump in a little bit on this? So with respect to that issue, it's not a planning board issue per se, because that's out of your jurisdiction as to whether it's migrant housing or not. If that's an issue, if there are, they are charging rent, they have another problem, another agency, not yours, right? So that's his issue, that's the applicant's issue with the county, with the state. So if, if they're charging rent and not supposed to, that's for another agency to determine, not your board. You know, the condition as it's written right now, right, talks about, you know, operations for migrant farm worker housing. If they're in violation of that, it's up to you to enforce it.
We're treating it as migrant housing.
You're treating it as migrant housing, but if they're in violation of that provision of the code, and I hear what you're saying, then that's, that's a separate issue, but that's not really what's on the table for you tonight.
And we went through the code provisions, so your code, your town code has specific provisions about migrant farm worker housing, and we went through this analysis eighteen months ago. So we, we certainly meet the code requirements, and we're certainly going to meet the county requirements. Whether there's some other state requirements, you know, as your attorney said, that's not for this board to decide.
Right, it, it, yeah, for a pure planning issue, what he's asking for, what you're, you know, may or may not approve, is, is completely okay to do. But those other aspects and elements of migrant housing itself, right, you have your code provision that he has to comply with, the county, he has to comply with. I'm not familiar with the state provision, I, I just know a little bit about the, the migrant housing, because I know we've done some litigation in every garden in my firm. But what I would say is, again, that's, that's the applicant's issue, if he runs afoul of that.
And, you know, I, I would believe, because this was done a while ago, that the underlying authorization has a provision in general conditions. What, be, one of them being that there'd be compliance with all.
Right, applicable laws, correct.
Right, so I think.
I mean, you're, this board's, I'm comfortable with this board being okay, again, for, for making this condition, removing five B. But as to the other issue that, that is raised, again, he may even run afoul of it, that's not your concern, right?
Thank you.
I'll bring it over to Ag Markets.
Your, your project?
I will.
As an individual, not as a board?
No, as Orange County Farm Bureau.
Yep, okay, uh, question, we keep referring to inclusion of exhibit A, which was the original amended resolution that superseded the, the original resolution, and says it's, uh, attached, so is that going to become physically attached to it?
It'll be part of it, right. The one that you signed, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Just wait, all those conditions, uh, counter for it. Comments, revisions?
Did we, did we get the answer as to the applicant should provide or shall?
Uh, I changed the shot, yep. Yep. Yes, we're never use the applicant's shop about a copy of the operations permit.
Other comments? Not then, could I have a motion to approve the second amended resolution of conditional approval? Special permit and major site plan for Joel Fetter, otherwise known as AKA All-In Audio.
So move.
Phil, second by?
I'll second.
Giovanni, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against?
Aye.
One against. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're saying you just, you just put hide that's the album on any form? That's what they just did.
Exactly.
Next item on the agenda, the Solar Liberty Energy Systems Incorporated, eighteen dash one dash one point three. We have an application for a subdivision site plan and special permit for a solar energy system on fifty-eight point nine plus or minus acres along Milburn Road, Moonlight Trail, and Storm's Road, RU Zone, VQ Three Stream Corner, Water Supply Watershed, and Seic Road Corner overlays. We're here tonight to consider a draft, not deck. Which one do you want to go to?
All right, well, start. Good evening, members of the board. Ben here report. My name's Ari Goldberg from the law firm of Barclay Damon. Nick Bombas from La Bella is here. He's our glare consultant. And then we've got John Gurley from Solar Energy Partners, one of the people on the development team. It's good to be back here, even though there's a Bills game tonight and I'm from Buffalo, but...
You're going to win anyway.
Yeah, I think so too. But don't forget to come in here to Jackson John's territory feeling busy. And then, you know, what really does bring us back here is I want to talk about this middle that we made two weeks ago, which included an executive summary from La Bella and three glare analyses with a corresponding landscape plan that was revised. We are now proposing for our landscape plan, there's eight areas of planting. For glare purposes, it's really important that we focus on areas two and area eight, which is also referred to as the improved tree line along Milburn Road. See that language throughout the glare analyses. But then in our landscape plan, it's tree screening area eight. Can see them. And our, part of our plan with that is area two and area eight, why we're focusing on them is because we want to plant them as soon as possible. Ideally, this fall, you know, twenty twenty-five, fall goes smoothly. And part of that is because we wanted to really consider how, why, and what exactly we're planting to address the continuing glare issues. For areas two and eight, the main areas we want to focus on, it's looking like, or, sorry, excuse me. We want to plant this fall, plant at twelve feet in height of, we call baby giant, or, or green giant arborettes. I'm going to zoom in on the plan schedule here to give you those exact numbers. But this was included in the submission as well. So you can see area two here, green giant arborettes, sixty-four in quantity at twelve feet in height to start. Same with area eight, that's another ninety-four green giants at twelve feet in height to start. So those a total of one hundred and fifty-eight green giants right off the bat as soon as possible, areas two and eight. Those are the two areas right here. Here's Milburn Road, where my cursor is, and we're, and that's where we've been seeing the glare. And that's why we're looking to plant area two and eight as soon as possible. We've also heard some of the other comments from the board previously. We want to double stack those rows. So there'll be the line of trees, uh, is it eight feet off center, and then behind them is the other row, eight feet off center.
Staggered.
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 Sorry, that was what I meant, but the two rows. So the plan is to have area two and area eight in by the fall of twenty twenty-six, excuse me, the fall of twenty twenty-five. And then there would be no project yet. Those would just be in the ground growing as we work our way through the other necessary approvals. Our goal is to work with Frank Levan, the building department, and he's been better on that plan, that plan in life. So with that kind of plan in mind, what we wanted to do was demonstrate to the board that this is an effective plan, that as we can get this part of the growth early, we can then plant the other areas of trees. And as our landscaping takes and grows, this current glare issue becomes even further reduced. So Nick and his team, Haley Parego at La Bella, who signed the executive summary, they prepared three different glare analyses, each in different points in time. The first was a fall twenty twenty-six projection. I'll take you right into that. And that's the scenario where the green giants have been planted for a year and everything else was just initially planted. You can see, this is the same page in every single glare analysis. It's improved tree line along Milburn Road, AKA area eight. And because we're now in twenty twenty-six, we've assumed about four feet of growth in that first year. And that's why it's being measured at sixteen feet. You can see screening area two also measured at sixteen feet, assuming four feet of growth from that first year of planting. With that resulting in fall twenty twenty-six, you're still seeing some glare here. Uh, on Milburn Road and Moonlight, Milburn's got the highest concentration at twenty-six hundred, twenty-seven hundred minutes of yellow glare, spread out over the course of the entire year. Now, getting better from where we were, but there's obviously still work to be done. That is also really important to draw your attention to where exactly along Milburn Road this glare is being observed from. So let me actually show you. This is how Milburn Road is tracked within the glare analysis. Comes off of the road here and then goes, goes all the way down, running east-west to the dead end. And then it even is measured a little bit within to the private property. If we then look back at the glare location, see this little squiggly part here, the end? If we look back at the glare location, that's where a lot of that yellow glare is focused, on that dead end side of the road. And it would be observed when you're driving, correctly, Vermont, it'd be observed when you're moving east to west, so going back up the road.
Up the road.
West-east. Thank you. Still back up the road, yeah.
Okay.
Another portion where we're seeing a lot of glare is a little further down Milburn, back up towards the main part of it. And that sort of aligns, you're going to tell this aligns with area eight on the plan. So we're really trying to address those two areas, and I think it's also important to really put them into context for you about where they are exactly.
So where there is glare along those locations, are you proposing to put in the green giants?
Yep.
Is it, and even with the green giants, they'll, they'll be getting glare?
It's better, though. So let's fast forward one year, fall twenty twenty-seven. Uh, we've got one year maturation for screening areas one, three, and seven. Those are the secondary ones we planted. And then two years of growth for screening area two and eight. Uh, showing you the growth again, we've, based on La Bella and John and I all reaching out to different landscapers, that's why we have the four feet, one and a half feet for everything else. So that puts our area two and area eight at twenty feet in height. And then screening areas one and three to seven at seven and a half feet in height. The result is a pretty large decrease with this next year. The numbers on the right side of the screen here are from twenty twenty-six, and then I've encircled the twenty twenty-seven results. So you can see PV ray one C casts about eight hundred minutes less of glare. Overall, Milburn Road is down to seventeen hundred, a thousand minutes are shaved off. And then, if you're following Moonlight Trail, two hundred and seven minutes were shaved off as a result of that. So here's the, uh, just to show you what went into the, into the actual results, improved tree line along Milburn Road showing at twenty feet. And if I scroll down, you can see the seven and a half feet, for example, of screening area one, and then again, twenty feet for screening area two. The glare location, where it's casting, is remaining the same. It's that dead end portion of Milburn, and then a little bit further up the road, back up the hill. Can you, um, uh, help us a little bit more with the, the area up the road? Is that, is that where those two houses are, sort of in that? I'll jump ahead for you. I got a slide on that. Oh, don't, don't rush it, Mike. Bring it, kickoffs. No, no, no. Uh, look, I will, I will put it in space for you. So we're, we're getting down to less glare. In twenty twenty-eight, we're going to do, we had another ray, so now we're up to more height, twenty-four feet and nine. And the results are pretty staggering. We're finally at what, a pretty, pretty significant decrease here. Milburn Road is under a thousand minutes, and again, if you're following Moonlight, it's down to zero. And of course, within context, it's that seven forty-three still spread out across the entire year. And then to Jeremy's point, let's look at it in context. I'm sorry, let me give you the results again. There's the same locations for each array, and then, this is, there you go. So this clouded area is pretty much the entire, combining the two areas of glare that we're seeing on Milburn. And then we're aligning area two and area eight directly with that screening. So it really, if we were tracking, if the glare begins after the driveway of seventeen Milburn Road, it does run along twenty-five, and then you have this open field area and the dead end drive.
I have a question.
Yes?
Mr., we, we keep referring to the growth of the, uh, trees four feet per year.
Yep.
Is there any consideration as far as the gert, the spread of the tree? Because we're staggering them, but we're filling in. It's not just, it's...
Yeah, it gets better. So that's part of why we thought the, your, your suggestion from several meetings ago of staggering them would be helpful too. Because now you're creating more of that wall.
But does the analysis take that into account or strictly the height?
No, it imagines a wall of trees twenty-four feet.
Assuming it's a solid wall, okay.
So help me understand, when, so you, you're, you're planning, let's just say, to install the green giant arborettes this fall? ASAP. When do you envision the panels actually being constructed going in? So in, in, this is the ideal scenario?
Right, right.
Yeah, it would be fall twenty twenty-six would be the panel install, and that would be a year of growth for areas two and eight, and the initial install of our things.
Of everything else, okay.
If I, if I may, so what's the total minutes of yellow glare? And is there any green glare expected?
At what point in time?
That's a good question. Is that commencement?
So at commencement of the project, which I think for purposes of this discussion, we'll call it the fall twenty twenty-six results, there is twenty-six hundred minutes of yellow glare along Milburn Road at those, at dead end location and a little bit further up the drive. That landscaping is nonetheless in place. I think the one thing I also want to point out about putting the glare in space. So Nick's team measured the glare along Milburn Road itself. That's where we're picking up all these minutes. That's what this measurement is. They drew this blue path into the forged glare analysis tool, and it determined the glare on this area. We've also, as part of the glare analysis, ran it on specific observation points, including the houses along Milburn and at the end of Milburn. Those observation points, when we run the same analysis, this is the fall twenty twenty-six results, for those observation points is actually zero. So, but at the road, it's twenty-six hundred. So what we're looking at is the isolation of the glare along the actual roadway, which would affect motorists heading, what direction?
West-east.
West-east, up the hill. Uh, and only at, if we also look at, let's see if I can get to the results page. In between six and seven AM.
So when you, you get to the fall of twenty twenty-eight?
Yes.
What are we anticipating?
It's, it's right on that final page if you can open.
Yeah, yeah, I'm looking at it.
Yeah, so yellow glare at fall of twenty twenty-eight is down to seven hundred sixty-three total minutes. And the, the observation points at the homes is pretty compelling. Is that a topography reason? I assume it must be. Yeah, that, that must be it, yeah. I know they are. Honestly, I had, I had to look at the, the elevation.
I mean, it's surprising that twenty feet away is...
Right, exactly, yeah. Yeah, I do have, let me see if I can pull this up. So you have it open a little bit. This is, uh, roughly a bit after this, probably right around here is where we, that landscaping area will start. And so it'll take advantage of the existing and improve it. That's why we're calling it the improved tree line. It's going to go all the way along Milburn back towards this dead end. You can even see on, on the Google image. I think part of the reason there's so much glare in this area is just that, exactly that topography. You've got, it's almost this valley and then rises back up, uh, towards, I think, because last got highway is up far over there.
And then, green glare would be sixty minutes at fall of twenty twenty-eight?
Whatever time the chart is the end.
Sixty minutes, sixty hours.
Sixty hours, yeah. No, there's still, there's still green glare, about a thousand hours of green glare from here. But as, we...
Yeah, no, it's right.
Yeah, sixty thousand minutes, a thousand hours. And at the, the other analyses I've done this too, it does discuss that yellow glare is more... Does that mean?
I don't know what...
Joe, I think it's you. Is it?
This one is open.
Do you have any comments, Jim?
At, at maturity, how tall will the giant arborette be?
It's in twenty twenty-eight.
Well, at their maturity.
At their peak maturity?
Yeah.
Thirty plus, thirty plus peak. So the, yeah, the conclusion, I highlighted some of the main conclusions. It's, it's all about how it's isolated that northern side. And then what this is showing us is that as the screening trees increase in height, glare is going down. So the sooner we can get into the ground with trees, not necessarily the array itself, we think it's better for the product, and it does address these remaining concerns. And at least, you know, overall, our perspective is, there's, could still be some fine tuning along the way with regards to maybe specific species at some locations, or even if the array gets pushed back from a set, for some reason. I know we still have to see the public, but as far as our team is concerned, the environmental impact of the array is a known entity now. We are committed to this plan, this screening two, screening Area Eight, pre-planting plan for the project. And we think that mitigates the last remaining environmental concern. So we're, we're hoping that the board discusses the NEDC tonight as much as it can. And if they're ready for a vote, we would welcome that as well.
So the proposed one-year look back would be commenced when?
Can you try to brush again, Phil?
The one-year look back to see the ready.
One year, I think the one-year look back, it will be your town's condition, but I think it's one year from.
Twenty twenty-seven.
What is it, one year from commercial operations, close of building permit?
I don't recall what you've done in the past, but I mean, obviously, it would have to be a bit of a fall.
It would have to be up and running.
So I would imagine that you've probably done it from issuance of CEO.
That makes sense.
Right, so you're right, Eric. In this, in this scenario, it would be twenty twenty-seven.
Before. With respect to that couple of meetings we had at some point, um, I mean, we, we take you at your word with the, the glare analysis. But I, I think if the people who live in those homes show up, I, I think it would be good to have an explanation for why they, they would receive zero glare in the road in front of them significantly.
Yeah, it sounds like there's some digging in between, you know, how do you get from OP two at zero to the road right in front of you?
And, and the only other question I have is, the property, all the way at the end of the road with sort of the most glare where that driveway is, do they have a relationship to the project at all, or is that a separate?
No relationship.
Yeah, it's this area. Actually, Ari, if I may, I.
Please, yeah, John.
I did the, sorry, John, thank you guys for entertaining us again. But yeah, when I was doing the, uh, what's it called, Latchelon Tube? It, 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 and it was, I was studying this just because I wanted to rationalize the limited amount. You see, uh, the glare decreases double-digit percentages on Milburn Road proper. So it is that, it's beyond the fork is, is what's included in the array. I'm sorry, in the route receptor. And that elevation is starting to move up the hill significantly. That's, that, that made sense. That's why, even though the trees are getting four feet higher, you're, you're already starting to peer as opposed to the, the homes and the drives that are down a little bit, it is a little bit further, lower elevation, maybe ten to.
I, John, you're saying that because our trees.
Yeah, it kind of shows up there, you can see it goes up beyond.
So I think he's right, our trees are planted at a higher elevation along here.
Almost over where the receptor is, is what I'm pointing out. This is higher. If you're, if you're standing at this route receptor, you're, you're at a higher spot. So your vantage to see the panels is, is a higher vantage point. So that, it is going down, but it's not going down as much.
Yeah, for example, the, the observation point two is, I think it's right at the front door of this house. So there, you can't see it from, uh, just from the Google map, but I think as we get closer to engaging with the public more on this, I know John's itching to walk in and go talk to them too. So I think we'll try to establish that before we even get to that meeting.
That's very important, thank you.
Well, that doesn't make sense.
Well, you know, uh, are we talking about the NEDC or? Uh, uh, at the end of the day, the NEDC should reflect in terms of minutes of glare. The total minutes of yellow glare are anticipated to be, likewise for the green glare. And I think that the NEDC.
At what point?
Well, that's a clarification kind of question mark, meaning when? When do we see, whatever numbers we're putting in, when do we see that? When do we anticipate that?
Yeah, right now, I think it's the fall twenty twenty-seven number, maybe it's the fall twenty twenty-eight. NEDC.
The fall twenty twenty-seven, one year of operation.
Okay.
Let me just throw this aside, it makes sense to have them do another glare study after being in the operation after a year, see.
That's correct. Well, I think right now what we're trying to do is we're trying to demonstrate that there's no significant environmental impact on purpose to see.
Right.
So you, you could ask for a most development study. Um, I don't know if there's any way to do that study in real time rather than model it, go out and actually measure it. I'm not sure if they have those capabilities. But again, tonight, uh, they're, they're looking to get over the hurdle seeker. And the reason they're looking to do that, in addition to against the project is, as this board knows, you cannot have a public hearing because of subdivision until after you finish the screening.
I guess the, the only thing I, I would want to say, just because this is like a record that we're creating, is that I do think that seven hundred sixty, whatever, minutes of glare is a lot. Uh, and it is, in almost any other situation would be too much, but because the applicant is, is asserting that where this glare is focused is an area where the impact can be sort of ingested and it won't cause too much disruption or harm. Like, I, I, again, I take them that they're working for that, but, but I, I would not like us to see, I would not like us to approve seven hundred sixty-three minutes of yellow glare, sort of as a general matter, you know, one seventy-nine.
And that's part of your secret review, right? It's not just in the back, it's just not, just not a number, you're looking at where that glare is, when it occurs, what, what the surrounding property will like.
So other comments before we consider the NEDC?
I'll just make a comment. Um, as far as the four feet of growth in the first year, I think that's very optimistic. I know planting trees, the first year, it's, the root system is establishing itself. So I find it hard to believe that this tree is going, going to grow a third in height the first year. So I, I appreciate the plan, but I'm just, I'm a little skeptical of four feet of growth the first year. If there's any kind of documentation to back that up. That's all I have.
Yeah, so landscape, uh, company or someone that does install or.
Probably have a landscape architect confirm for the benefit of the board that that growth is accurate and likely to occur under the circumstances. I think the look back provision is another, I mean, we've, we've talked about that before, we're committed to that too. It's in our interest to make sure this growth occurs since we're putting it out there that it is the, helps the glare be ingested.
I don't doubt it'll get there, but the first year, I just, I don't see it happening.
Are these trees bare rooted or are they bald?
And I would say at that size, they're adding up.
They're having a.
Well, not always, it depends. Where, if it's bald, it might not, it won't be that much of a growth, but there should be growth. If they were bare rooted, they would not be. If you recall, the ones over here, oh, what are they called? Where the nuns are, they were gonna be bare rooted.
They should be.
And they were the size.
Bare root. I believe it's bald. It's the expectation. And it would, just considering that that's gonna be the most favorable for their healthy trees, that's what we're gonna do regardless. And it just, it just makes no sense.
We're gonna have to fill in water in that area because of the head quentin.
Yeah, that's the nice issue. That's a good point.
Other concerns?
Just, just a comment, I, I think if we want, if we want to look at what this will look like in a number of years, I think as an example, on Seventeen M going to Chester, uh, if you know, that's Ted Talmadge's farm. It's just, just at the edge of Gosham, Chester. Uh, it's the one on the hillside that looks really good at Seventeen. But he has, right around his house, he has his exact thing planted eight foot on center and staggered and all that. And it looks really good at this point in time, up to about eight or ten feet up, and then it opens up and you see the top. I think it's a good example of what they're proposing.
Thanks, Neil.
Mr. Chairman, can I just add one thing?
Please.
The applicant did participate in the stamp painting and the building inspector was there. And he did confirm that there's no permit required necessarily for the applicant to plant these trees, they can do so. He also wanted to mention that it set their own risk. So for example, I think there might have been a conflict on site plan between the plantings and maybe the lay down area or something like that. So any plantings now doesn't guarantee that additional plantings will be required, modification of the site plan will be required.
How do you intend to, like, this kind of came up, water the shrubs, whose plants, you know, throughout the course of the first year, you know, till they figure?
What, uh?
You can't rely on this guy.
Is this, is this happening?
I don't think it's on yet.
I can just speak up, uh, so, yeah, no problem. So we, uh, I can use this too, then, then it's on, online on the, is that, okay, either way. So the, there's the bags. And then part of the strategy of planting this time of year is the natural, if you will, um, while hydrating, that, that will occur during the winter months. Uh, so that, that helps a lot, that's one of the reasons why we're in the rush, so to speak. But yeah, then they put bags on it, so, uh, the, the description one, and they do, this, this planter does a one-year, it's part of their planting process, they do their own one-year front planting regardless, um, just for health purposes, et cetera. But again, we, we talked about that, but that's, that's what I know about the process we're discussing so far.
Just one other, just to reiterate, so there shouldn't really be a rush because they can go out there and mow and plant the trees.
Right.
So that's what we think is, so.
Okay.
Neil.
I mean, one of the things, I mean, I talked to, because you showed that, so that's a planting bond or a bond that hopefully will happen for these, for these trees to make sure, you know, there's, there's something to protect, obviously, the town with those plantings. So again, what that amount's gonna be, you have the building department trying to figure out, but it should be something that obviously is significant in the sense that, because you have a lot, you have a lot of trees here.
To keep them alive.
Alive, right, or else we, you know, utilize the bond, but that's something should be considered by board and obviously conditions and approval.
It's three hundred fifty-eight total trees proposed right now. I would, I think a bond is, is pretty industry standard nowadays. And I know too that John's company already owns the property. They, it's not, you've already talked to landscapers to get this going. The other thing I was gonna say was, we could also look at our O and M plan, our operations and maintenance plan, and make sure that unlike maybe some other solar rays out there, that landscape is at the forefront of it. So that it's maintained by whoever's going to check on the panels is also either hiring, uh, some sort of landscape company to, to ensure the growth as well. And I don't know, I've seen some towns requested that we, you get yearly reports from our O and M operator. And we can, in addition to your code of course, folks are going out making standard checks, I think that's probably a reasonable way to ensure that the growth aligns with what we're proposing.
How often are the panels, uh, site this, you know, scheduled? You know, assuming there's no, uh, issues with failures that are in the panels, how often is that a month, once a week?
I'm not prepared, I'm not prepared to comment specifically on it. We're in discussions with a couple of O and M providers. And so, and I, I really like one of them in particular. Um, they've got a good amount of experience, their own large portfolio, et cetera, but I didn't get that specific answer. I, I just think they're very, they're presenting themselves to us as very competent. Um, they've done a, a variety of different approaches too, even with the landscaping maintenance, including, um, sheep raising, sheep farming. So we like that personally. They even have bees on some of their properties, uh, but beekeepers employed to harvest honey. Not in any relevance to anything else, but it's just interesting. But anyway, yeah, so I don't know a specific answer. I'm, I'm sure it's minimally annually, but probably, probably semi-annually. I mean, we're obviously interested in making sure that the production stays. That's the whole point of the system, to bring energy.
I think too, that they're going to comply with the O and M plan that we present.
Yeah.
So we have the flexibility based on conditions on approval to adjust it slightly to, to match the concerns.
Yeah, I'm only thinking like, if they're only looking at the trees every six months.
Just not that helpful.
It's not gonna be that helpful, and you might be out of a growing season as far as replacement.
All right, I'm sorry, how many trees did you say you?
Three hundred and fifty-eight.
Are you just looking at the, the evergreens?
Nope.
Oh, oh, great. Didn't you just do the math again?
Five seventy-eight. Five hundred and seventy-eight, no, sorry, sorry.
All right, seventy-eight?
Five seventy-eight.
And to, just another thing, Ari, you mentioned, so in other towns where I do this work, they, like, the bond coincides to, to the point where you get to the condition that you're actually looking at, you're studying. So it's not just a three-year, it could be longer than that, but it, it covers the period by which you can get to that growth that we're expecting.
That we're targeting.
Yeah, I know, like, in the one town in Westeros I represent, it's ten years. They had a ten-year planting in a bond that was in place for something similar like this. So again, just something to consider, that's all.
Thank you. At this point, do we take a look at the NEDC?
It's up to you, we're, I think that's appropriate time.
Phil?
What, what's that?
Oh, hold.
Do you want to look at the NEDC at this point?
Yeah.
Sure.
I don't see why not.
Yeah, it's five times.
Sure.
Okay. Let's take a look at the NEDC. Can we roll up a copy of the files? Phil, you had some comments you want to make on this?
Uh, yeah, um, impacts on flooding, on the last line. I think actually no significant adverse impacts due to flooding. All right, discipline.
So we're adding in the word "to."
Due, due to.
Yep.
Then, uh, in the paragraph, impacts on plants and animals, roll over, rolling over to the second paragraph on the following page. Um, second line, replacement ratio of trees with a minimum height of eight feet, is that at planting?
Now it's a little bit different. I, it's just like a highlighted section within the draft here, uh, for, uh, NEDC.
Maybe I'm looking at it wrong.
No, I know what you're, we're looking at. So now it's, yeah, there are a hundred and fifty-eight trees at planting at twelve feet in height, three hundred fifty evergreens at six feet in height, and seventy deciduous trees at six feet in height.
And that adds up to five seventy-eight?
Yes, it does.
That's three fifty.
With certainty, I will say it adds up to five seventy-eight.
And that's, I'm sorry, but that's all at planting?
Those are the heights at planting.
Okay. I think we should just clarify that by the end of saying, well, at the time of planting.
Here, we, we can revise it to add the numbers that are currently proposed and say that those are the numbers at planting.
Yeah, yeah. And I think we should, that same paragraph, we should revise to say that the, uh, glint glare analysis was further revised on, uh, nine four twenty-five? Are we good, we're all together?
Yes.
And in impacts on aesthetic resources, in the middle of the paragraph, all the way on the right-hand side, it's got fifteen hundred and eighty-four minutes. First of all, I think we should put in the more current number, and we should break out the yellow and the green. When you say current, you mean the twenty twenty-eight or the?
No, it's the second proposal, but.
The proposal is currently, uh, stands with the September four, twenty twenty-five letter.
We could.
Put it in three.
Yeah, we could put it in all three years, I understand, that's what I was.
He just talks about the yellow right now.
I did put in a provision, the look back may result in applicant performing additional planting to further improve aesthetics and further reduce glint and glare. But is that your understanding? I was doing that for clarification.
Yeah.
For him to work with.
Yeah.
Okay. I will. Ari, did you get that line, uh, impacts on aesthetic resources? The third line from the bottom, before it says, as a result.
As a result in assuming compliance with.
Just before that.
Okay.
Proposing to put in a sentence, the look back may result in applicant performing additional plantings to further improve aesthetics and to further reduce glint and glare.
I would make, if you're comfortable with it, planting and/or mitigation. If they're just cleaning up a certain tree that didn't take or something like this.
Okay.
I also want to add out about, I'm sorry to interrupt you, let me know if it's inappropriate, but.
Is this about bills?
No, okay, do you know?
I'm just setting them up.
I lost my whole train of thought. It might be able, within the, it might be able to say year of operation one, year of operations two, year of operations three. When we talk about. when we talk about fall twenty twenty-six, seven, and eight, instead of committing to those years in case the planting plan doesn't occur right away. Or for some reason, we decide to go fall twenty twenty-seven because of other project related. But, so to speak, globally saying we're, we're committed to year one of operations will have a year of growth behind it, but.
And then, impact on noise, odor, and light. On the carryover to the next page, third line from the bottom. The proposed project will not create any new sources of light. I would put in a paragraph for that. Excluding glint and glare as discussed or referenced above, it impacts on plants and animals in parentheses. Or you can put that at the end of this, after all this. And in the consistency with community plans, one, two, three, four lines down. Board recognizes that, planning board recognizes that the proposed action is permitted with a special permit from the town planning board.
No, town board, town, town board.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, the town board. And in the last paragraph, the town negotiation planning board finds that proposed action will not result in significant adverse environmental impacts. By its approval, assuming the accuracy and completeness of, and I would just insert, in compliance with the plans and documents submitted by the applicant, take out the S. It's not applicant, it's by the applicant. You okay with that? You're good?
Great.
You're good.
Thanks, Phil. Other comments or revisions?
I just have a question, in the glare paragraph, whatever amounts of yellow glare and green glare per year, despite the lead topography leading to some viewpoints having project use, I didn't even understand the purpose of that clause. The lead topography.
It doesn't matter that much.
If we don't, if we don't know.
That language actually came from the applicant, so.
You can remove that.
I agree.
I don't know what I was thinking.
I know what you're trying to say, but you don't really need it.
It's top of page four, red at glare minutes.
Okay.
Despite the lead topography.
And those are. Thank you.
I don't.
Yeah, page four, impact on energy. The proposed action will not require new or an upgrade to the existing substation or energy transmission or supply systems. It will require an upgrade to the, what you're calling the supply system, which is the distribution system. There's only single phase add-on, Milburn, so it's going to have to be upgraded. So, you could take out knock out of that.
Yeah.
So, I have.
Chairman?
I'm good, thank you.
Diana?
No, I'm good, thank you.
If all that, you have anything else, Sean?
That was chairman.
There's no other revisions that need to be made. Could I have a motion to approve the neg deck as, modify the C neg?
I'll place a motion.
Diana, second by?
I'll second.
Marty, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against?
Seven seven by the way.
Thanks. I don't know which one is better.
You get a vote. It's a win-win. All right. Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Well, Sean.
So, the first order of business is to determine whether the board's going to have a meeting on September 2nd. I think G O got back.
No, October, October 2nd.
October 2nd.
Yeah, I think we did a poll last. We did a poll on last meeting, we did have four, so it's got to be firm. No, I think we have the.
No, you needed one, that's why you just kind of deferred it until tonight. But G O says that you think it'll be there, so you'll have a forum, so I presume you want to still have.
Who's not going to be there?
All right, I'm not going to be.
I got two.
Wait, this is, this is two, I'm going to call it.
Yoka Porizonde.
But, but, I'm, I'm back to our fourth.
About October.
October, second of October, shoot. Why are we here? Oh, okay, that is, yes.
I'll be here.
Three.
I will likely be there.
Okay, one likely. You're not going to be here, Diana?
I'll be here.
You got three on the desk, Mr. Chairman.
Where, Yoka?
How about you? There he is.
October 2nd.
I can be here.
You can be here, that would be our fourth.
All right, Marty, if something changes, please let everybody know.
I'll do.
So, now that you're having a meeting on October 2nd, it's going to be nine twenty associates, you remember that was a small plumbing operation. They're coming back for conversion to automobile sales and service. And then unit plant is coming back in for amended approval for recreational business. That's all I have right now.
Sean, what was the thing that very subtle in the subdivision of this property? Do you know anything about that?
Yes, but that's only been in front of the staff meeting and.
I can't break my record.
I did see her here this evening, I don't think anything.
If she was here, where, where is this property?
I don't recall where it is, it was many months ago that we hooked it. But I don't think you received anything from her, the subdivision.
Her, by that?
Yes.
She's on a, well, I don't know.
Okay, so that, that will not be on your next meeting.
Any issues the board wants to raise?
Who's going to chair the next meeting?
You.
You're up.
Yeah?
Oh, no. October 2nd.
Yeah, okay.
Cheers.
He's watching football.
If there's no other.
Gee, your teacher could.
If there's no other issues, I've got a motion to close the town planning board meeting. Eric, second by. No, sir. Yes, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against?